Now we're gonna have to keep going again, because they were bad this year. Just before.
I know, I hate to see your son come in there. Oh, gosh.
He just.
Okay.
Loving them girls.
Yep, yep.
Don't want to remind them of real branching conditions?
No. Yeah, no. Rather not step out of the vehicle and have your pant legs filled with stickers.
No.
Yeah.
That's happened since I was a kid, and he's part of it still.
Yeah, it has. It has.
Poor kid.
Just not doing football.
No, at the playground, not your playground, but at a playground, yeah.
Shoot. That's bad.
So he's getting pictures taken tonight. Oh, it's so cute, because the kid that were playing last year, he was holding on to his flag, so nobody could see him. Mom, did you see that? So then finally, like, just tackle him. You can't get the flag, just tackle him. I'm like, no.
Well, my very first time, I mean, I was a big guy. I was, everything came across, like, the offensive line, essentially. And it's like, turn and just grab the flag and just don't play. He just.
I think.
It's so quiet, oh my gosh.
This is nap time.
You better be getting it. Were you a student at school, didn't you? Nap with your eyes open?
Hmm.
Still do it church.
Here we go. Five twenty-nine.
Gotta wait thirty seconds.
I'm just all excited. Nine. There we go.
There we go.
The September twenty twenty-one meeting of the North Platte Planning Commission will come to order. Roll call.
Davies. Winder.
Here.
Fudge.
Here.
Vane.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
McGann.
Here.
Jet.
Here.
Forbes.
Here.
And Whirl.
Here.
Kayakwaram is present.
Okay, current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted at the back of the council chambers. Uh, I assume you've had time to look over the minutes, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Any one of us.
Mr. Winder moved, and Mr. Jet seconded.
Point to me.
Click or vote. And the motion carries. Our next item is to discuss and consider a request by Paul Wyman to consider vacating a twenty-foot access easement on the east side of the property located at thirteen twenty-one East Second Street in an R-two dwelling district and described as Lot Three, Wyman Second Subdivision, North Platte, Nebraska. Judy?
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a location map showing the easement that is proposed to be vacated. Paul Wyman owns both of the properties abutting the access easement. The easement was originally placed on thirteen twenty-one East Second Street to allow access to a garage located at fourteen oh one East Second Street. Mr. Wyman is willing to place an easement on the property for access to the garage. However, he would like it to be a private easement and not granted to the city as an access easement. The city currently does not use the access easement. Water and sewer are located in the alley to the north. Planning staff has no objection to vacating the access easement. However, it is strongly suggested that the property owner provide a private easement to allow continued access to the garage. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Stupid question from the new guy.
Okay.
So if we remove the municipal easement, what way is there for us to ensure that he provides a private easement?
Well, what I can do is ask that he gets that private easement to me so that I can file it prior to council action. That would be really the only way to guarantee it. And honestly, it really has no effect on us, because he owns both of those properties. It's going to, if he would sell the fourteen oh one, there would be an issue with the purchaser, purchasing that property. They would not have access there. So it's going to be more of a hindrance to the property owner if he doesn't do it than it is for the city. Yes, there's no reason for him not.
He's getting up in years, and so you never know.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to have that in hand before we act on this, or?
Um, you can put it as part of your motion if you want to, granting the access easement, provided that a private easement is placed on it.
Any other comments?
For the sake of discussion, I would move to approve the vacation of the twenty-foot access easement located at thirteen twenty-one East Second Street, provided the property owner provide a private easement to city staff prior to city council meeting.
Second. Has been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? And click or vote. It appears that the motion carries. So you'll take care of that, Judy?
Yep, I will make sure it's done.
Okay, item number four on our agenda is a public hearing. File number Z twenty-one dash zero zero five. Discuss and consider action on an application by M. Dowd- Doughty? Is that right?
Doty.
Doty, thank you.
You're welcome.
LLC to rezone certain lands from an R-two dwelling district to an R-three dwelling district on property located at four oh four and four oh six West F Street, and is described as Lot One, Block Twenty, Residence Park subdivision from North Platte, Nebraska. Judy?
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments, also a site, um, location map and a map with the rezoning from an R-two to an R-three. Um, in order to rezone the property, the planning commission must ensure that the rezoning is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. The applicants are requesting the zone change to allow for an addition to the current duplex located on the property. The addition of the additional proposed duplex would create a multifamily residential structure. It would now be a fourplex, which requires zoning to be an R-three, which allows for multifamily development. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant would be required to obtain approval from the Board of Adjustment for variances to setbacks. The variances were discussed this morning at the Board of Adjustment meeting. And what happened at that meeting, provide the information, is they did approve all the variances needed to allow development of this property into the fourplex, contingent upon the rezoning being approved. Um, if the rezoning is not contingent upon the approval of the variances, so you can go ahead and rezone it. You could have went ahead and rezoned it had the variances not been approved. But at this point, they were approved, so it's really kind of a null and void point. Um, planning staff has no objections to the rezoning. It is in conformance with the City of North Platte Comprehensive Plan twenty-eleven. The area is located in close proximity to other single-family duplex and multifamily commercial uses. Development of the site into additional multifamily residential would be a benefit to the community. The applicant is here, if you have any questions for him.
And I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself from this vote and discussion, because my husband has done some work for M. Doty LLC. So just don't want that to be a conflict of interest in any way, and so I will.
All right, thank you, Emily. Thank you, Ms. Whirl.
Oh, yes.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone wants to come to the front and give us your name and your address and.
My name is Marcus Doty, address two zero zero two Birchwood Road. Um, I am applicant for this rezoning from R-two to R-three. Um, there, there really aren't too many, um, new things to this one. Um, after this morning, we got all the variances cleared. So I'd also just like to open up if there are any direct questions that you would have regarding the, the project or, um, with any concerns regarding this transition.
At this time, if you do have questions for the applicant, I would allow you to ask them to him. We'll have a time to discuss amongst ourselves in a few minutes.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Madam Chair, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Moved by Mr. Fudge to close the hearing, second.
Second.
Mr. Weber seconded. Click or vote. Oh, Emily can't vote.
I don't know. There we go.
Yeah.
If she closes the hearing, she can, couldn't she?
Well, I suppose she could, but she already kind of refused herself, so.
It passes anyway, whether. Okay, discussion amongst ourselves. That motion did carry, by the way, so the public hearing is closed.
So I heard you talking a little bit, were there any, anything from the Board of Adjustment?
Okay, so basically what they needed to do at the Board of Adjustment is this lot, if you look at it in the picture, it appears that it can very easily fit on that lot. Um, there were issues with setbacks, because, um, the right-of-way for Willow and the right-of-way on F Street are eighty-foot right-of-ways, which are pretty unusual, because most of the streets are sixty-six-foot right-of-way. So his property line actually starts, um, behind the sidewalks. So that's what the variances were needed for, because he couldn't meet the setbacks from his actual property line. Um, they didn't seem to have any issues with that this morning in the Board of Adjustment meeting. The one concern that they did have was parking. Um, they are required to have one and a half parking stalls per dwelling unit. So for this example, for this one, they would have been required to have six onsite parking stalls. Um, he has requested to allow just four onsite parking stalls, and that was approved again, to just have the four.
And those would be off, on, on the curb side, then?
Um, they actually are coming, there's two of them that are gonna be proposed to come in off of Willow.
Okay.
You can kind of see in that picture closer to where the, um, trees are on the south side. There's kind of a larger entrance there, it's more, it's a shared access. And then he would park basically on the south side of the proposed new building. And then the other two parking stalls would be then, um, on the west, which, towards the alley, where there's some trees there, would be the other two parking stalls.
So he's adding on to the existing building that's there that's a duplex already?
Yep, basically is going to.
And there's no parking for those two?
Um, right now, there's two onsite. Which is again.
Under the back tree back here?
Uh, no, but would be around the front where that parking is, yep, right there.
Isn't that, isn't that parking for the current building, that, there's a slab of cement?
Yes.
Right off of Willow, where the big bunch of trees is?
Yes.
And it doesn't show there, there, it looks like there's a driveway or something. But then behind that, or west of that, is a, a concrete, oh well, a, a pad for parking.
Yep.
So I assume that's where they park, unless they park along F Street. But you have to provide off-street parking, don't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And again, this is just the rezoning, because all of that was approved, so this is just the rezone.
And this just rezones that lot?
That particular lot, yes.
Any other comments or questions or discussion? Do we have a motion? I think the, is there a?
Yeah, never mind.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve file number Z twenty-one zero zero five to rezone certain lands from an R-two dwelling district to an R-three dwelling, uh, dwelling district located at four oh four and four oh six West F Street.
Second. Moved by Mr. Fudge, seconded by Mr. Winder. Is there any further discussion? If not, click or vote, and Emily, you are not voting right now. Okay. And the motion carries.
Okay, this will move on to, um, city council for October nineteenth. Yes, October nineteenth, I apologize.
Good luck.
All right. Item number five is discussion of upcoming zoning map and zoning regulation amendments. And this is a discussion only, we will not make any decisions tonight.
That is correct.
But it is a discussion, and.
So at the last, at the last, um, Planning Commission meeting, we reviewed, um, the R-three and what we're now calling the RM, or what we now may possibly be calling an RM district. And so at that meeting also, um, there was a suggestion made to, uh, come up with some zoning regulations for recreational vehicle parks. And so I've included that, and then, um, went through the rest of our remaining zoning districts, which is a suburban residential, which is the RL district, the R-one district, which is single-family development district, and the R-two districts. So, um, basically, I just sent it out, just for your review, to kind of look at it, see what your thoughts are. Um, if you have any, you know, major concerns, if this is something you think we should continue to move forward with. Open for criticisms, critiques, edits, whatever it is you would like.
So then the idea behind all this is we were gonna bite this off in chunks, so we would do, like, the R stuff first, and then
Yep.
move on to whatever.
Yep. So kind of what the plan is, is to go through and look at all of these residential, we'll get into the commercial industrial. Um, there's hospital districts, there's, um, special service districts, all of those. So we're gonna kind of take them off in chunks, look at them, see what we think, and then we'll move forward to the next one. We're not going to adopt anything until we have everything in place that we think we want. And then we will revise the zoning map also, and get that in kind of a, a draft format. And then at that point, once we get all of that done, then it takes a number of public hearings to get it passed. And I'm sure we'll probably fill the council chambers at that point.
My only concern is there's gonna be a lot of legal non-conforming uses that arise from it.
Yep, and that happens a lot.
Right.
Yep. And I don't think that there's any way of really getting around those legal non-conforming uses when you start looking at that.
There, we're not talking of having a sunset or anything on it?
Um, I, we can, um, so you know, uh, like if we're talking about mobile homes maybe, and mobile homes on single-family, or single lots. We can continue those as legal non-conforming uses. We can allow individuals to come in and replace those if we want. We can put a sunset on something like that. Um, your other ones, as far as them being legal non-conforming uses, so say, for example, you had a multifamily that is now in a R-two district. We're gonna try and keep as many of those out as we can, but if we have a multifamily that's in an R-two district, um, we would allow that continued use, but what normally happens with those legal non-conforming is they're allowed to continue to maintain those, but they can't expand that non-conforming use. So if they had a fourplex and wanted to go to a sixplex, but it was in an R-two district without rezoning or something like that, they would not be able to expand that non-conforming use.
What happens to the rebuild if it gets destroyed?
Um, there's a provision in there, and I'll make sure you guys see that also. There's a provision in there, so if something is an act of God, so a tornado comes through, flood, something like that, and more than, if it's less than fifty percent, is usually how it works, and we can adjust that any way that we feel that we need to also. But usually, if it's, um, less than fifty percent damage, they're allowed to rebuild it. If it's more than a fifty percent damage, at that point, then we can say, no, you now have to conform to the point. Yep, that's usually how those are written. But again, we have the right to write those the way that we feel we need to.
So this is RL, R-one, and R-two, but we aren't dealing with the RM in here?
No, not in this one.
Okay.
We talked about that the last time. I mean, we can still talk about it, that's fine. But, um, yeah, we kind of reviewed that the last time.
Yep, oh, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood where we were.
Yep. Um, one of the things that I want to point out in, um, all of these zoning districts, the R-one, R-two, R-three, one of the things that we've added is townhome development. Because right now, currently, if you, and do you all understand what a townhome is? So you've got the common wall, it's kind of like a duplex, but you're on individual-owned lots. So right now, if somebody wanted to do that, we do not have the provision in there that allows that. So what they would have to do is they've got a ton of hoops to jump through in order to do that, because you have that side yard setback, so that common wall is on a lot line. And we don't allow a zero lot line setback currently. So what that does is that throws somebody, if they want to do townhome development, they've got to go through the Board of Adjustment. They've got to get that, that lot, um, variance to that side yard setback to make it zero. So they have to go through that step. Then they would have to come to us to be able to do that. Whereas by putting townhome development in there now, you've got a provision that says, okay, if you're doing a townhome and it's got a common wall, then you have zero setback. So that skips the step of making people go through the Board of Adjustment. So we're trying to make things a little bit easier for development, but yet still have a very structured, um, zoning so that, you know, we don't have a lot of junk in a lot of places.
So another stupid question.
Stop. No such thing.
There is no such thing.
No, no.
Given, given our community's current need for development, why wouldn't we shove some of this, shove is the wrong word, but go ahead and deal with some of this R stuff and get the, the zoning updated so we can help some of this development, rather than wait for the whole enchilada?
And we can. I mean, that's, that's something that, we can do that. We can take the residential and go ahead and run through that, um, process of getting that in, and then come back later and go through the other. I, I mean, that's fine, that's entirely up to you. If you want to get it started quicker, we can do that. And go ahead and go through the, um, public hearing for the map and the public hearing for the reason, or for the amendments. Get that all done, and then come back later and do it. But then we're gonna be doing the public hearings again. No skin off my back, whichever way you want to do it.
Well, I guess my only thought process there is, I mean, I don't know how many units were short, but given some of the development we're seeing in our community, it seems like we're going to be short again. And I know I've talked to Gary at the Chamber and a couple of other folks, that we need to get going on some of this stuff. But we, as a city, can do something to pick up some of the barriers and get them out of the way. It seems to me like that might be the prudent course of action.
And if that's what you choose to do, I have no issue with that. We can go ahead and since, basically, we're kind of done with the, um, commer, or the residential areas, we could just go ahead and, and get those done, and do the map, and go through the process, and then come back and look at the commercial and some of that other later. Because, yeah, I mean, it's gonna take us probably six months to get through the rest of it.
Right, that was my point. If we're, if we're still sitting here at this point in January or February and haven't really tackled housing, then we're another three or four months behind going through all the hearings.
Okay. Yeah, I have no.
And I'm, I'm one guy here, so everybody else.
So what do you think? You think that's, that we should move ahead with working with the residential areas, the ones that are?
R-one through four.
R-one to M, or whatever it is?
RL to RM, yep.
That include R-one?
Yep, RL, R-one, R-two, R-three, RM.
That would give all of us a chance to review also what things are in an R-one district, what can be allowed in a one, uh, in an R-one district as a, um, uh, conditional use permit and that kind of thing. And that's probably a good review for all of us.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I can do that at the next meeting. I'll come back with, um, the conditional uses and what the allowed uses would be in each of those districts. I'm gonna try and do it in a, kind of a spreadsheet, um, kind of a table format. Whereas right now, we list, individually list every single use in every single district. I'm gonna try and do it in more of a, um, spreadsheet type of format, so it might be a little bit easier to use, I'm hoping. And I'll try and come back with that at the next meeting, and then hopefully we can move forward with doing some of those other things. And maybe we can get it done by January and open it up to construction season.
Yeah, I like it.
But like, even on the RM from last meeting, you know, I feel like there was a lot of loose ends or, you know, unknowns on what we wanted to decide as a board, so how does, can you, how does that process work as far as us going eh?
Yeah, we can still discuss that, so, yeah, so there's no problem, we're still discussing that. And even when we get to the public hearing portion of it, if we still have changes, yeah, that's not a problem. Um, but yeah, we won't go to the public hearing probably until, I would say, December, January, to get that done. That way, it'll give us a few more meetings to go ahead and discuss all of it again.
All of it again, so continue to look at, you said RL through RM?
So RL, R-one, R-two, R-three, and RM. Yep, there's five of them.
Five of them, okay.
And then.
Five different ways to put a house down.
And then the recreational vehicle park, which I just presented to you, yep.
Right.
Yeah, and if you have any ideas, you can always email me, you know, things you would like, and we can talk about it at the next meeting or things that you have questions about, and we can make sure we talk about those.
Okay, and I, I mean, I do agree with David, like, and if you can get that, Dad, I think that's a great idea, to move it forward in that manner.
I think our contractors are gonna have to go rapidly next spring.
Okay, anything else on item five? All right, I, I assume we will have a lively discussion in October.
October, November, December, January.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, item six, old business. Judy, do you have any comments about the, the conference in Kearney?
Um, yeah.
I think that's old business.
That's old business? Okay, so, um, Michelle and I attended the Nebraska Planning and Zoning Conference in Kearney. Um, Marilyn and Angie came down for Wednesday, I believe. Um, I think it's always a great conference, I guess I don't have anything specific. Um, housing was a big topic, housing is always a big topic. We're not the only ones that have, uh, have housing issues, so, you know, as much as we like to think we're extremely unique, it, housing is not a unique problem. Um, I did listen to a speaker, we all listened to the same speaker, um, she's out of Salina, Kansas. And Marilyn and I actually talked about having her come, if we can get her to come to North Platte. She's the, um, Development Director at Salina, Kansas. And she's got a lot of different ideas on housing, housing development, how to get that to occur, how to make your zoning work for some of these developers and things like that. I thought she was, she was really good. That's all I have, I guess.
The session, I went to an all-day session on legal issues, legislation. And I have pages of notes, but it was still interesting, the presenter was very good, and, um, And, um, you wonder sometimes how things get on the books. And I'll just leave it at that.
Angie?
Oh, really? You're throwing me under the bus. I went to an all-day session and I just learned really the same thing, housing. I think he said there was eighty-three houses on the market in Hall County when he checked before he came. It's all.
Hall County is a pretty big county.
Yeah, that's what he said. I think it was like just eighty-three. I mean, I did take notes, but I don't think I can read my notes because.
Yeah, we're not alone in the shortage.
Wait till you see what I took my notes on.
It's not even just the state, it's happening.
No, when I went to Chicago for a national convention a couple of weeks ago, it's, it's all over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many do we have here now, Nelson?
Oh, gosh, probably about seventy today.
That's more than we have had, isn't it?
We've had a lot more come on the market in the last few weeks, so it's been picking up.
Interesting this time of year.
Under contract.
Yeah.
And if there's seventy on the market, that's all, everything in the MLS, not just North Platte, so.
I did learn that all the Milford, Nebraska commissioners resigned at the same time. They all walked out.
Oh, don't do that.
They weren't doing things through the planning commission, I think, is what he said. They weren't doing things through the planning commission. They were just doing it all on their own and they all walked out, I guess. So I was like, oh, hopefully our guys don't do that. We already got one that's walked out, so. But yeah, that, I was surprised that I did enjoy it, I guess is what you want to say, really.
It was also an opportunity for Angie and I to get to know each other better and to discuss some, some ideas and so on and so forth. So, um, I enjoyed it. I don't know, she probably prayed the whole time because I was driving.
It worked.
It worked.
We made it.
Okay, thank you. New business.
I don't have anything.
New business? None? Well then, I think we are adjourned. And I can guarantee you next month will be a long meeting.
Next month will be a long meeting?
I don't know.